Thank you. For the next item, we are going to take a look at a review of proposed items for the Board's legislative agenda. As you know, each fall, the School Board establishes its annual legislative agenda and priorities for advocacy during the General Assembly session in January. We're going to begin today with an interactive session, so sharing some information and also an opportunity to interact as you all begin to give input related to what you want your priorities to be. And so we have three presenters and facilitators for you today. So Ken Blackstone, Bev Lamey, and Drew Baker are here for this item, and we'll turn our attention to them.
All right, we can sit up here. Well, good afternoon, Board members and Dr. Cashwell. I am Ken Blackstone, the Assistant Director of Communications and one of your liaisons to lawmakers and the General Assembly. Today, I'm joined by longtime Legislative Liaison Bev Lamey, who is in her 20th year in serving in this capacity. And I couldn't have... (applause) And I couldn't have asked for a better mentor and partner. I've just been like a sponge soaking up her institutional knowledge, which has been invaluable to me. And also joining us to support our development of the priorities is Drew Baker, who is from our Professional Learning Department. And let me advance the slide here. We have three parts to today's agenda item. First, we're going to look back at last year's priorities and related actions taken by the General Assembly. Secondly, we're going to look ahead to the 2023 session and the topics and issues we believe will be of importance. Following that, and this is something new this year, we have an exciting activity that will take place down at the work table in the center of the room, where Dr. Baker will help us to facilitate an activity that is designed to gather your input for your new legislative priorities for the upcoming session. So to help with our review, we have developed and provided you with the Legislative Scorecard that you have at your seats to show how legislative action from last session aligned to your priorities. And it is my pleasure to turn it over to Bev at this time to go through that review.
Thanks, Ken. Madam Chair, members of the Board, it's delightful to see you all again, and we are very much looking forward to the discussion. But for right now, let's just take a moment to kind of review the 2022 General Assembly session as it relates to your priorities. I love the scorecard. I'd like to do that for them down there. But at any rate, our first topic is really funding. It's something that we always talk about, and we have an ongoing position about the fact of its importance in making sure that we offer the best education for our students. There were significant increases in funding this past year. But before we really pat ourselves or themselves perhaps on the back too much, we have to remember that the amount that Virginia has set aside for education this session is really only 270 million, 270 million. That's all away from the 2009 pre-recession amounts for public education. 2009 was a long time ago, so we have a lot of work to do still. The other issue about funding is having to do with unfunded mandates. We've talked about that before. We have made some inroads as far as some of our health bills that have come to us with no funding or little funding. This is an example. Last year, there was a bill having to do with Caesar Management Training that is now required for any employee that encounters students. Money was not set aside for that. So just these are the kinds of examples of things that we talk about with unfunded mandates. Second topic, teacher and staff shortages are certainly a nationwide issue, Virginia issue, and I would imagine Henrico's as well. There was a slight budget increase in the Virginia Teacher Scholarship Fund Program that has been around for a very long time. It really helped to offset tuition for students. So there was a slight increase in that. But another budget item was the important study of the teacher licensure process, and also included in that are going to be looking at recruitment and retention strategies as part of that. The other piece of the... When we talk about school counselors, the staff shortages with the support cap are still with us. We've certainly made some inroads, I think, in the teaching process of our General Assembly members as to what is included in the support cap. We continue and will be continuing to remind them of EL teachers. We need instructional aides. We obviously have cafeteria, maintenance, and technology staff that are needed, and bus drivers. Now, the next topic under our, you know, really talking about teachers and staff, school bus drivers, certainly there was a shortage. We did get one bill passed having to do with the CDL licensure process, and so we felt that that was at least a statement made statewide as to how we might improve recruitment. Next topic, School Board Authority. We are always very protective of maintaining the local authority for our school board running schools. The College Lab School Bill that was proposed last year did not pass. It did not make it out of the Senate, and the governor then chose to take $100 million and put it into the budget to support the College Lab School Initiative. During this school year now, we are going to be looking at the planning of it, setting the schools up with a projected opening date of September 2023. The other big item in that category of School Board Authority, which continues to be something that plagues us, General Assembly has a tendency to think they can manage student discipline better than the local school board. So we have to kind of try to help them understand that it's really best if you leave that with the localities. And we have a new bill last year that passed, though, that indicates now that all misdemeanors, or no, I shouldn't say all, some misdemeanors, maybe such as student fights or theft, are now required to be reported to local law enforcement. And the other thing that is a very important topic under School Board Authority is parent choice, parent authority. Those two topics, we feel certain, will be coming back into the 23 session. So, Ken?
Thank you, Bev. Now, looking ahead to the upcoming session, Bev and I recently attended a couple of different meetings, including one with our Legislative Liaisons from around the Commonwealth, from other school divisions, and also the VSBA Legislative Advocacy Conference, where anticipated topics were discussed in some detail. Just for context, each party still has their majority chamber. Democrats hold the Senate while Republicans have the edge in the House, so getting legislation passed will definitely be a challenge. In addition, 2023, as you know, is an election year with new districts drawn across the Commonwealth. All 140 state legislators are up for election next fall, which will certainly be on the minds of those legislators during the session. So the bulleted items that you see there that are listed were... These are what we're hearing regarding these anticipated areas of debate. All are pretty familiar topics. Just wanted to touch on the tax reform. While some discussions will likely be corporate-focused, what may also be discussed is locality's ability to leverage a 1% sales tax for school construction, and whether to repeal the grocery tax, which of course would impact local funding. Finally, it's worth noting that the 2023 session falls in the middle of Virginia's biennial budget cycle, and therefore it's based on the existing two-year state budget cycle. The governor will announce his budget revisions on December 15th, and of course, the economic outlook for 2023 is uncertain right now. So these are important items to keep in mind as we transition to the next part of our presentation. And for that, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Baker to lead us in an activity to discuss your 2023 School Board priorities in relation to these topics, as well as other areas of importance for two HCPS. So before you come down, Drew is going to just give you a brief overview.
Thanks, Ken. Good afternoon, Madam Chair, ladies and gentlemen of the Board, Dr. Cashwell. I'm Dr. Drew Baker, and we're really excited when we got the requests to kind of come in and facilitate something that's more active, so where the School Board could have more of a chance to get input. What we'll be doing is actually something that you'll see in our schools, or you'll see in our professional learning as we work with teachers. For some of you, it might not be, you know, a total surprise, or maybe this is the sort of activity you've done before, but the goal is to efficiently and effectively get as much feedback as we can as a group so that this becomes something that is collaboratively engaged upon and created. So we're going to be using a protocol, and all a protocol is, is it's like a set activity that is time constrained, so we don't spend too long doing kind of creative and collaborative work, but we also make sure that all voices are equitably heard. And this is called a Notice and Like and Wonder Protocol. And again, you might see this in our schools if you're going around with teams working together. You might see people doing this with students, principals using this with their staff, or we use it at the central office level as well. So excited to have you kind of join in on part of our school culture, too. What we'll be doing is, I'll pull up the protocol in a moment, and we will be taking you guys through this, but it really, you'll have a chance to give feedback in three different categories. And we do this for a reason. Sometimes when you just say, "Give general feedback," it doesn't become as specific or as usable, so we're trying to get as much of your opinions and thoughts and expertise to Ken and Bev so they can take this and really customize the School Board priorities so it really reflects you. The first kind of type of feedback we'll be giving are notice, are notice statements. And so what notice statements are, is they're factual statements, things that as you're going through, we know some of these have been emailed out to you guys ahead of time. You've had the presentation from Bev and Ken here, just things that you are noticing about past legislative priorities or what's coming up in 2023. And so we'll kind of give you a chance to write those down and then share them when we're here at the table. Then you'll do like statements. This one's pretty self-explanatory, and a like statement is something that you think is admirable, or you think that is something that you would like to see more of, or you're glad is in the legislative priorities, again, either from the past or coming up to the future. And then finally, there's something called wonder statements, and wonder statements are things that, it doesn't necessarily mean, "I don't like this." So, you know, it's not like, hey, you know, we need to change this. It's more of looking at future possibilities. So I wonder, like a wonder statement would say, "We have this on there, but I wonder if we can make it stronger," or "I wonder if we can change the language," or "I'm not seeing this, and I wonder if we can add it in." There's three examples here. Like, you'll see the notice statement is really, again, it's very like factual, you know, just kind of reporting on what's there. The like statement, "I like how these priorities closely align with our strategic plan." Wonder might say, "I wonder how we can increase stipends for board-certified teachers," or something like that. So these are three kind of examples. I'm going to pull up our... And I'm kind of already doing this first part, which is the context, and you'll see this will be our protocol. And this is something you guys have heard about HCPSU and the things that we put on there. We actually have all these protocols here for our teachers and our leaders to use. So we're pulling this right off the U. And we are, I'm setting the context right here. In a moment, we'll ask you to come down from the dais and come down to this table where you can ask clarifying questions, one about like, okay, how is this going to work, but also you can ask Bev and Ken clarifying questions about what was presented. Then you'll see, we'll go through each round. I'll lead the first one, and Ken and his group created these really cool note cards for you guys to write things down. They're customized with our logo on it. They look great. And you won't really talk during that first, during that first, you know, writing down the notice statements. You'll have three minutes, so all these right here are the amount of time. Madam Chair, we were asking, we were wondering if you could be our timekeeper. Yes, would that be okay? She, we appreciate it. Yes, exactly.
Also, Dr. Baker, I want to say that I noticed for your wonder statement that it, you know, may be a little loaded there.
Yes.
Just kidding.
You're nailing it already, and we're doing great, and that's why we go through the protocol. So, thank you. We have, and then you'll have time to share them out. And the difference is, so you'll write them down, and then you'll share them out. That's why it's a little bit different, because you'll just read one statement at a time, and this lets us get a lot of feedback really quickly. So you can customize this as fast as possible. Then Ken will take us through the like round. Again, you're writing them down on your own, and then we will share them, reading them through, and Bev will be recording them on our chart paper. So making me know that you enjoy that. You'll also see, it will do the same for the wonder round, and there's more time on here, because typically we have more to talk about on this round. And then what will happen, this will mostly be Ken and Bev, they will kind of reflect on the feedback you gave them, so they'll know, oh, okay, as we're going forward, we want to revise this. Here is what we are seeing. And then we will also, we want to make sure that you do have some time to also, like, it's kind of structured at the beginning. At the end, you will have some time to debrief, to just give your general thoughts on all this and kind of, you know, instead of just reporting out the statements that you're writing down, you'll get some time to say, here's really how I'm feeling about the whole thing. So this is how we'll go forward. Before we move on, Ken and Bev, am I forgetting anything?
I don't think so.
I think we're good.
All right. So now we'll ask you guys to come down from the dais. We have seats right here, and we will begin on the clarifying questions. We have microphones set up, so you guys can come on down here.
Board members, I'll point out that you've got some printed materials that might be helpful if you would like to bring them down with you. They're in board docs, but just if you want to be able to annotate.
Check one. One, two.
So we will follow kind of the protocol that's right up here. Ms. She, do you mind putting five minutes on our clock for us? If we end up going over, what we can do is we can always elect and say, hey, do we need to spend another minute on this? That's typically what we do. But again, the idea is to, we keep it time-constrained just to make sure that we don't take too much of your valuable time, but can get as much input as possible. So now we'll go into a round where you'll have some time to look through the materials that you have, and also you can ask clarifying questions, especially with Bev and Ken, who have the expertise here, we felt you might want sometimes. So what we'll do is we'll kind of open up for five minutes before we move on to giving feedback. What clarifying questions do you guys have, either about the activity itself or this material here for legislative priorities that you would like clarified before you can give feedback?
Dr. Baker, it doesn't seem any of my colleagues have any questions at this time. Shall we move to the next section?
Yeah, absolutely. This is great. So now, we're moving on number three, the notice round. So you'll take some time, and you've got these cards right here, and you can just write down statements, kind of fact-finding statements, the things that are jumping out for you on the legislative priorities. You will write them all down here. We'll be quiet while you guys write them down, and then we will share them out. I'll be bouncing around if you have any questions, and we'll do three minutes on the clock.
We've got one minute left on our notice round.
All right, that's time. Thank you for being our timekeeper, by the way. It always works out, I think, better that way. So what we'll do here now is, we can just pass the microphone around, and you guys can share one statement each, and we can just kind of keep going around. Bev's going to write it down. Again, we're also going to record all this electronically, and they can take these physical sheets as well, so all of your feedback is being captured, and that's the goal here, right, is to capture the feedback to get your input in a thoughtful way. So we can kind of just go around. Miss Concello, you're welcome to start, and you just read something you noticed, and Bev's going to write it down right there, and then we will just pass around this way.
Okay. Many of our I notice, many of our 2022 positions still remain a priority.
So I agree with Mrs. Concello. I think also ESG issues continue to linger on, particularly if you weren't aware, ESG, so your environmental, your social justice, and governance. All three of those categories continue to linger on and impact how effective we can be, I think, in legislation. And when I say social justice, I'm talking specifically around, you know, gender identity, equity, those sorts of things. I notice that is a continued discussion. The other area is around... Environmental justice.
Environmental.
And governance justice.
Yep. Oh, and we'll also be collecting your cards, too, so if we ever get to the point where we can't get through it all, these cards will be collected as data as well.
Are you ready? That we have been opposing unfunded mandates every year since I've been on the Board. Since 2014.
It's kind of funny you said that, because I wrote that. I noticed unfunded new mandates continue to be an issue that goes unaddressed.
Yep. Or you could always do a plus one after it. Sometimes we'll do that. You guys are nailing the notice statements. This is perfect.
I noticed when looking at all of these things together, it's a lot to process, and some of the verbiage may be challenging, particularly for new legislators who may not be all the way in the weeds for education.
Mm-hmm.
Ready? Okay.
Yep. Perfect.
I noticed there is no mention of support for bringing Virginia up to the national average regarding teacher pay.
I also noticed that we don't have a priority position on safety.
That we have a, I have to word this delicately, that the General Assembly members continue to try and do the job that School Board members were elected to do.
Let Bev word that.
I noticed the importance of the conversation around parent and student rights that will take place and transpire.
I noticed we're out of time for this section, and we're going to move to the next one, Dr. Baker.
Wow, that's amazing. Okay, and that's great. And the other thing we will do here is we will collect these cards, and then also at the end, we will give you guys a chance where we'll email everybody out a unique Google form. Ken will explain this, but don't feel like if we didn't get everything up there, that's okay, because there's more time to gather this. And now I'll be passing on to Ken for the next round.
Thank you so much, Dr. Baker. Now, the second round of the activity, very similar. It's the like round, where you will repeat the same exercise and note three or four things that you like about our past legislative priorities and materials. And again, just to emphasize the, or to reiterate the example that was on the screen, was, I like how these priorities align closely with our strategic plan, would be an example.
A priority position is not the actions, right?
Correct. Yes. And I think we have three minutes allotted for this one. Thank you. We need the Jeopardy music. Little under a minute left. Little under a minute left. Okay. Now, we do have one less minute than we did on the report out last time. So we have four minutes to share out the likes.
We have five minutes. We had four minutes last time.
I'm sorry. I was looking at the wrong, I was looking at the wrong column.
Dr. Baker gave me the job of timekeeper and I take classroom jobs very seriously.
I actually just, he asked me to test you on that. So just to make sure you were paying attention. Thank you very much. So we can just go around kind of rapidly and make sure we get to everybody.
I like the continued prioritization of teacher and staff shortages.
I like that my thoughts were captured in the presentation. I like how our positions align and support our strategic plan.
Mine is similar to Christie's that we, I like that we advocate for teachers and staff members in general.
I like that we continue to support positions of equity and diversity as aligned with our strategic plan despite attempts by our current administration to redefine those terms.
I like the focus on improving the SOQ infrastructure, particularly on re-benchmarking the SOQs. While Ms. Lammy's writing, I'll just add, I know my district became keenly aware that the SOQ for fifth grade is 35 students to one teacher. And so when we look at fully funding SOQs, it only means but so much if the SOQ doesn't fit Henryco standards.
I would add on to what you just said, but that's not the protocol I'm supposed to follow. So I'm gonna go back to you. I'm gonna let her finish writing. Okay. I like the 2022 priorities as they reflect the constituents and the students we serve in Henryco County.
And I said it all when I said number two, that what we have outlined truly supports our strategic plan so that we can meet and exceed our goals.
You can put a plus one for number four because mine was similar to student rights. But the other one that I have is that I like that we recognize there is a need to advocate at the state level. Some school systems don't have legislative agendas and legislative priorities and I'd like that we get involved and consider that part of our work.
I like that we continue to take a strong position opposite legislation that diminishes board authority.
I was saying, I feel the strong need to do the classroom me-too sign that our students do when someone's sharing and you agree. I like that these priorities focus on students, staff and community because all of those impact our schools.
Yeah, I was just gonna add additional support to the fact, of course, that it aligns with our strategic plan because that's what drives the division. But that I also, I like number two. And then, of course, because Henryco County, our enrollment and our community are so diverse, if you could put a, I like number four as well, to continue to support equity and diversity in our community and in our schools.
And time. All right, I'm gonna start our five minutes to one, wonder, wonder, or wander.
We're right at about two minutes left. Again, we give a little bit more time for this and our experience and our data shows that usually this, this round needs a little bit more time for people to gather their thoughts. So about two minutes left. One minute remaining. Here, I'll pass it over to you. All right, and you guys don't need much coaching. I think we've got it at this point. So we're sharing out on the wonder round.
I wonder what more we can do to make a difference and to be heard.
I wonder how we can clarify governmental roles and how they work together between legislative, executive branches, judicial branches and localities.
I wonder how we can accomplish reducing class sizes amidst a teacher crisis and shortage since they, you know, depending on the study that I choose to follow, which says they directly impact our students as well as our teachers and staff.
So I wonder how we can visually show how our legislative priorities fit and support our legislative goals so that we can educate the community on how that works together and get more buy-in to help us as we're advocating in the General Assembly.
I wonder how we can help others understand how actually hard it is to be a classroom teacher.
I wonder how we, if we could facilitate an activity such as this with our constituents, electorate.
I wonder how to strengthen safety in communities, which strongly correlates to safety in our buildings.
You want to go again? Can I go? Just go twice. Just go twice. I wonder how assessments could be reduced and more relevant.
I wonder how we can better advocate for special education. I think in, in this particular space, statutorily, school districts have to provide the services. However, we know the expensive cost. And so how can we advocate better for increased funding around special education, also educate those in legislation about the complexity of exceptional needs and developmental differences?
Okay, you got that one? I wonder how we can find more funding for teacher support positions like instructional aids, which I think are difference makers.
I wonder how we can increase discretionary grants for teacher recruitment and retention bonuses for harder to staff schools.
I wonder how we can maintain autonomy with schools but decrease how siloed support is with mental health, English language learners, social services, those sorts of things.
I think this goes along with something Mrs. Shea said earlier, but I don't know which one it was. I wonder if we can highlight roles and responsibilities of different elected bodies.
Like number one.
Right, like number one. Yeah, number two, number two. I agree with that because I think folks need to understand what is within our power and what is not.
We have safe, safe schools listed here as a goal, but I wonder if we can include it as a priority. And then there's a part B to that. So I'll let you write, adding it as a priority. And then in adding it as a priority, an example, you know, would be to advocate for more funding in this space. And I hear, I'm just gonna finish really quickly. Okay. And then an example would be we support legislative efforts for effective threat assessment teams and critical incident response training programs for our schools so that when there's a critical incident, whether it's a student causing harm to themselves or someone else, there is legislation. And I just feel maybe if we can consider adding it as a priority, then we can better advocate for that. And that's from mental health and physical health as well. And that's from mental health and physical health as well.
And you've got one more? Okay, my last one was, I wonder if we could be educated on more on how things get done at the state level and how the system really works. How, wow, yeah.
Okay, I have one more. I wonder how to collaborate with community colleges to increase certification pathways for dual enrollment.
I wonder if we could do this more often.
I wonder if we could utilize this format more often. Dr. Cashwell, we're having a good old time over here. We feel like we're back in the classroom.
And as Bev, who's doing an amazing job. She had the hardest job. In a way, I told her, I was like, wow, it really helps to have somebody who actually has expertise in the stuff when you're writing down the notes. We're right back. So I wanted to thank you guys. We're just going to move down into the last two pieces on here. And they may not take up the whole amount of time. But again, we want to thank you guys for your participation. And the reason why, again, we do it is we put, a protocol puts a little bit of structure on sort of brainstorming to make sure there's equity of voice and to make sure that it's more aligned with what the goals are, which here was to get as much feedback that is targeted as possible. So now, really, I'll pass it over to Ken and Bev, where you guys, they get a chance to reflect on all of this information you've given them. And then we go back to you guys, where you can go around and kind of have like a final thought or to debrief this as we go.
Well, this has been fun. I have certainly enjoyed it, but I think it's been really productive. And I think for what Drew said about getting the balance of voices, and hopefully you all feel like you've had enough time to really get everything on these charts. Our 23 positions are certainly now in development. And we will start to look at themes such as the social justice, equity. I think the teacher pay, teachers in general, certainly was another one. And I think just constant teaching our legislators about the job of teaching. I can't remember which chart that was on, but that's one of them. And maybe, Ken, do you have some others that you're seeing?
Well, I think they overlap with what you were saying. I was trying to write down themes that I heard, and some of those themes relate to what was our priority positions last year, but funding regarding mandates, teacher pay, recruitment, local authority. Another theme that I heard was that we have a very supporting environment and that our priorities should reflect that amongst teacher-students, safety, DEI, align with our strategic plan. Another theme that stuck out to me was for us to be more heard, to have maybe more relevancy or educating legislators and the public more about what we do. I think that was probably the one that resonated the most with me. And advocacy also for special education, mental health, social services, and those types of things. So I think my worries about not getting enough input were laid, because we certainly do have enough.
Let me just mention, too, you all mentioned something having to do about the advocacy role that you can play. I will tell you, having done this job, we're in front of them all the time, speaking, speaking, speaking. But when a school board member takes the time to come down there, so maybe as you all think about your priorities, think about what is important enough that you all really would feel strongly to come down there. Even, I mean, we've only had it once, that we had like a whole, it seemed like the whole school board. But it was very important to them. That was a local issue. It was not something statewide. But think about that. And if you feel like you would like to share insights, I think the best things that ever happen down there are when people that are in the real world of education, meaning your teachers, your schools, you all are very familiar with what goes on. When you tell them the stories, that's what gets their attention, and that's what they'll remember. Okay.
I know with the pandemic, we haven't had our legislative breakfast. We haven't had, you know, it's a little bit different. And I know, but things are changing. Do you anticipate that we will have that ability to meet with, as a group, with our Henrico delegation? Is that something you're planning again? Or, because I think that's powerful. If it doesn't work in that format, some other format, that they get a chance to meet with us. And because obviously, just giving them a piece of paper to read is great, and meeting with them one-on-one is great. But when they hear that we're unified in some of these things that are really a problem from one end of the county to the other, like teacher retention and some of the other things, I think it makes a difference when they have the ability to meet with us as a group.
I can't. Yes, and we actually have had a couple of meetings talking about innovative ideas and ways for us to dialogue with legislators. The breakfast was certainly a good way to do that and understanding, particularly as that theme came out, about really not only educating them, but more than one opportunity to do it and really continuing those conversations. So we'll be in touch with some ways we think we can facilitate that. And, yeah, so a number, whether it's inviting folks into shadow students or see what it's like in some of our schools in some structured ways. So lots more to come on that, but a great point. And then, of course, this will shape a new draft of priorities for the 2023 agenda. And you'll continue to have the opportunity to give input. So I know you're going to wrap it up by letting them know how they can continue to give input until our next session.
Thank you. Well, we do thank you for your thoughtful discussion and input. Oh, I'm sorry.
One second. Would it be possible, when you memorialize all of that, to give it to us, to look through and make thoughts on as well? I think it'd be great for us to have a copy of what you captured here.
Just like the raw data?
A picture? Yeah, that's a good idea.
Okay. Well, we certainly can do that. And we know that, actually, that will help to continue for us all to continue to think about the conversation and the ideas and to provide additional input. To that end, we will be providing each of you a form to submit additional thoughts and input. And Bev and I will use that information that we have captured today to create a draft of the legislative priorities that we'll continue to fine-tune and with the goal of presenting that to you for your review and potential approval at the November board meeting. So this concludes our presentation and activity. And we thank you for everything.
Thank you so much for our facilitators for putting this together. I think I can speak on behalf of my board members, looking at the nods and smiles, that this was a really productive way to do things. And we look forward to hopefully workshopping topics in the future as well.
All right. Again, look forward to following up with the board as we've captured your excellent feedback in developing the 2023 legislative agenda.